For August 27, 7:00 PM to order. Please rise with the applause of allegiance and invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening we meet together to solve problems, come together on issues, and work through many difficulties in Jackson over the next two years. Lord, please be with us this evening as we deal with this now in enclosed session through your son. Amen. We're all calling Adam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Baer.
Present.
Commissioner Walls.
Present.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Present.
Commissioner Duckham.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Present.
Commissioner Mahoney.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Elwell.
Here.
Chairman Shatwell.
Here.
Ate present.
Entertained a motion to approve the agenda. We have a motion and support. Items. Yes, sir. Go ahead. That's within the consent agenda. We'll deal with that at that time, sir. Any other items from the full agenda? Hearing none, all in favor? Those opposed? Duly carried. Awards and recognition. We have none this evening. Are there any written communications or petitions to come before the board? Please present them to the clerk. Seeing nor hearing none, we have no special order nor public hearings. This is your first opportunity for public comment. Public comment guidelines, each individual will state their name and have three minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under public comment opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate or answer questions at this time. First time for public comment.
Peter Bormuth. I'd like to first congratulate the road commission, our county road department, for the beautiful job they've done out near JC on Emmons Road, Wickwire Road, and Brownslake Road. Those roads are absolutely gorgeous. I know many of the commissioners who were here in the previous commission have supported the investment in equipment that we've made, and it's paying dividends. I'm really pleased with what I'm seeing there. I want to talk a little bit about a national issue. I hope all of you know what the Trump administration is doing with Title X. Title X is women's right to birth control and conception, for poor women in particular. Federal funds already cannot be used for abortion, but the Trump administration has placed a gag rule which essentially is going to, has removed all funding from Planned Parenthood. They withdrew, and I think one Maine clinic as well. And what this does, and what this means, is that poor women are not going to be able to get health care in terms of contraception and birth control. So this is not an attack on abortion. This is an attack on contraception. At the same time, the Trump administration is cutting food stamps to poor families. About 3 million people are going to be cut off food stamps. So they're going, forcing poor women to have children if they get pregnant and they don't have the money for contraception, and then they're not going to support the children who may be created. I find this pure Christian evil that's taking place at the highest level of government. Title VII, the Civil Rights Act, that says that, you know, you can't discriminate against people based on sex. You know, the Trump administration is arguing that that doesn't include anyone in the LGBT It's a Christian assault on our morality. It's an attempt to place the Christian morality on our government and on our government policies. It's evil. Climate change. Let me talk to you for a minute. President Trump said two things last week. One, he said wind power isn't any good because the wind doesn't blow. Do you know what that means? That means he's from New York and Florida. Have you ever been on the Great Plains? The wind is a constant presence. It never stops out there. Scientists have said that Texas, Nebraska, and the Dakotas could produce all the energy for the entire United States. We just need new transmission lines to take it to the East Coast. And then he said, "I'm not Christian."
Time's up, Peter.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Good evening. During my research of Jackson County's websites, I reviewed-
By yourself?
Pardon me?
Would you please state your name?
Julie Weisbrad.
Thank you, Julie.
During my research of Jackson County's website, I reviewed the adopted 2013-2020 Community Action Plan, which I'll refer to as the CAP. Throughout the executive summary that was signed by the county commissioners, the pride of the county leadership is very apparent. In essence, it states that as a leader and supporter of the initiative, it's with great pleasure that Jackson County presents this action plan, highlighting the activities Jackson County champions to improve the health and well-being of the residents. The summary goes on to state how health action teams were established to identify strategies that best leverage our community's strengths and address our needs and our gaps. It closes by stating how Jackson County is committed to the advancement of the health of our community and is proud to be a key stakeholder in the development and execution of this shared action plan. It then challenges the reader to become a champion in their homes, their neighborhoods, their schools, their work sites, in order for this work to be successful. On page six of the Community Action Plan, Jackson County states their commitment to collective impact, knowing that it's an evidence-based model of diverse organizations working together to effectively solve complex social problems. It's written how Jackson County, including the Health Department, have each devoted significant human and financial resources to this process and are committed to these efforts over the long term. It spells out to the reader that Jackson County not only serves as a health action team leader and champions several other strategies, but that the Health Department has designated staff to do such work. This staff includes a health educator serving as the healthy communities coordinator, whose primary responsibility is for executing several of the Community Action Plan strategies. When reviewing the annual reports provided on the Health Department's website, the program highlights are very impressive. From 2010 to 2018, the reader can see that the healthy communities coordinators initiatives range from providing and purchasing the bike racks that were installed downtown, helping to create a first-ever Loomis Park master plan, creating a healthy communities policy for the Health Department to adopt, creating a healthy vending program, the concessions that Cascades has adopted a healthy choices program. The list goes on and on.
Your time's up, Julie. Thank you.
My name is Kelly Underwood, and I'm a Summit Township resident, and I'm here to speak to you about the car seat safety program. As some of you may know, the car seat safety program has been in existence at the Jackson County Health Department for over 25 years, since the early 1990s. The car seat safety program is a low-cost car seat safety program which provides car seats to vulnerable children in Jackson County and is an education program for parents and caregivers on proper car seat use and installation. Many of our families, or many of the families that use the program, simply do not have the means and resources to purchase car seats at retail prices, so they look to the car seat safety program to fulfill that need. Also, the car seat safety program is not any more vulnerable than any other program at the Health Department that the Health Department is operating at this current time. However, certainly it is not any less vulnerable than any of the other programs. While elimination of the car seat safety program may succeed in closing the budget shortfall from 2019 to 2020, here are some items I wanted to make sure you are aware of. The Highway of Office Safety Planning considers Jackson County a high-risk county as we rank in the top 15 of 83 counties in Michigan for unrestrained vehicle fatalities and injuries for children under the age of 15. Jackson County is also considered a low technician, certified technician county, meaning we have three or less certified child passenger safety technicians in the county. So at the present time, the car seat safety program at the Health Department has two technicians. So with the elimination of the car seat safety program, that would leave us with no current technicians available to serve our community. Currently, through the grant, a grant through the Office of Highway Safety Planning, the car seat safety program does receive free car seats at no cost to the county, and those car seats must be distributed to low-income families who are WIC or Medicaid eligible. On site at the Jackson County Health Department in 2018, the car seat safety program provided over 274 brand-new car seats to low-income families and children, and inspected over 111 car seats for proper use and installation, and provided parents, over 366 parents and caregivers with car seat safety education sessions on how to install their car seat properly and how to harness their child in as well, safely as well. Since 2011, we have had annual meetings with Henry Ford Allegiance Health about sharing the costs of the car seat safety program, and we've even piloted the car seat safety program on-site at the hospital since 2014, and they've expressed no interest in helping us in the long term to fund the program. And lastly, the last thing, given the information about the car seat safety program, I just hope this will help guide in-
Time's up, Kelly.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Julie Cucucho. I live in Summit Township, and I'm here also to speak about the car seat program. Today, I spent the morning at a community session for Bridges Out of Poverty. It's presented by the nonprofit network and is very interesting. I would recommend all of you go to that if you have not already. I learned that Jackson's poverty rate is an average of 36.3. For single parents, that jumps up to 66.9. The car seat program helps a lot of single parents. The facilitator talked about the services to help these parents, and by law, parents have to keep their children in car seats till they're eight or four feet nine, and most low-income families cannot afford $100 car seat. I feel like our program is a very important bridge for these low-income families to get out of poverty. We have recently been told the program is anticipated to be closed due to budget cuts. The program is very important to our community, serving many expectant parents, foster parents, low-income families, families who just need educated on how to put car seats in. I don't know if any of you have tried to put a car seat in, but they are very difficult. The car seat program also helps educate organizations that transport kids, which is very important also to these programs. And they also do a rental program for grandparents who can't afford, or who have like grandkids coming in, so they'll do a rental, because most grandparents, it's very hard to install a car seat. I have watched the meeting where you said this could be picked up by the private sector, and I do agree, it could be picked up by the private sector, but nobody has yet done this. And I'm asking today that you use money from the general county fund to help keep this program going until we can get a program or someone, a car seat technician, in place in the private sector to do this.
30 seconds.
The community needs to have a place to go, to be educated and to receive low-cost car seats. We have a large amount of low-income families here. Thank you for your time.
My name is Beverly McGill, and I'm one of those grandparents that can't figure out how to put the car seat in the car. So I use the program, the car seat program, and I'm going to echo what the folks say. I'm fortunate enough, I can afford to purchase a car seat, which I did, but I really could not get the car seat in correctly for my grandchild. I have two grandchildren. I went to Rhode Island when the first one was born, and the hospital won't let you leave the hospital without checking out your car seat and making sure that the car seat is correctly installed. I went to DC for the birth of my second grandchild. There was no one there. We thought mistakenly that this must be something hospitals do, so here we are with an infant. We have a car seat. We don't know how to get the car seat in. Now, mind you, my daughter has a master's degree. I have a master's degree. It doesn't matter. Those things are darn hard to figure out how to get into the car. So we had to walk around. We looked for a police station. There, nobody at the police station could help us do it. So we did the best we could. We got home, and then we were able to finally make an appointment with someone. But what I want to say is, when I did some research on this, I looked, Ingham County has something like 12 different places people can go to get their car seats installed. Wasna County has several. I looked, if this program goes away, the closest program is going to be either in Onsted, Jonesville, or Ann Arbor. Now, we're talking some low-income people. How are they going to ever drive to those places and have those car seats installed? Car accidents are one of the leading causes of deaths of children. I don't think, I think with all the things that Jackson County is doing to try to attract young families to this community, the last thing we want to do is be one of the only counties in Michigan that doesn't have a car safety program. I think that, I agree, that we might be able to do this with the private sector or some other grants that are available. My background is as a grant writer, and I'm certainly willing to help do that. But somebody needs to fund this program in the interim, to say all of a sudden that this program is going to get cut and then cut it in 60 days or something. Where are these people going to go, first of all, to get the car seats they need, and to, second of all, to get the car seats installed? I don't think you want to read about children that have passed away because they didn't have a car seat correctly installed. I know that I don't. So thank you for your time.
Hi. My name's Denise Schoenhard. I'm a lifelong Summit Township resident. First, I want to thank all of you for the work you do in Jackson County, and thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. I'm here to voice my concerns over the proposed cuts to the Health Department. The Health Department administrative staff and the commissioners have been charged with a very difficult and challenging task. I wish I could offer a solution to the complex budget issues, but I can't. However, I do believe that the health and safety of our community, especially the health and safety of our most precious and vulnerable community members, should be of the utmost importance. The car seat program has been a staple in the Jackson community for well over 25 years. Countless parents, caregivers, foster parents, and agencies have utilized this program to make sure that their children are safe while traveling in a vehicle. I know you have to look at the numbers, but I'm not sure you can put a price on this program. The nature of prevention is that programs such as the car seat safety program will never know the full extent of deaths and injuries that are prevented as a result of their program, and that is priceless. I am asking that you think long and hard before cutting this program and that you explore every avenue for funding. Without this low-cost safety program, many parents will resort to using used car seats that may not be safe for their children. Many parents won't realize that they need to keep their children rear-facing until a certain age and weight, and many children will install their child's car seat incorrectly, putting their child at risk for severe or even fatal injuries in the event of a car crash. Thank you.
Good evening. Stephen Reiser, Mr. Chair, commissioners. I just wanted to come before you and request that you give thoughtful consideration to my application to serve on the Jackson District Library Board. I'm not sure if it's public servant-mindedness, or I'm just a glutton for punishment, but as many of you know, I do serve on many community boards. I'm currently this county's appointee to the Region Two Area Agency on Aging, where I am actually completing my second year as chair of that board, and I've reported to you all in the past of some great programs we have going on there at the agency, and how we continue to work every day as a board to facilitate the needs of the staff to assist seniors and persons with disabilities in Jackson County, but also Hillsdale and Lenawey County. At the city level, I've served on the City Planning Commission, currently serve on the Local Officers Compensation Commission, where I advocated for pay cuts but wasn't successful. And I currently serve on the City Charter Committee with Commissioner Williams. We haven't met in a while, but I think we'll be coming back soon. Little interest in the Jackson District Library Board. Prior to moving to Jackson, I served one term on the school board in my hometown. It was a great opportunity. I was actually the youngest school board member in the state of Michigan at the time. That record has since been beat. But one thing I did, even though I love technology and I have two cellphones that I left sitting over there, and an iPad and a laptop, and I have all sorts of gadgets in my house that I can control from my phone, I appreciate the value of the basics of reading, writing, and arithmetic. And we see a lot of schools actually now bringing back libraries and books. And this county has a great program where the district library partners with schools. I want to see how we can continue to grow and facilitate that. But when I served on a school board, one thing that I did was advocate to keep a library in each of our buildings. That was shocking to me that it was something that had to be done, but we did that, and I'm pleased to say, working through a millage and school remodel, we did keep a library renamed and rebranded as a media center because it had banks of computers and laptops, but it also maintained books and staff. So again, I just want to ask your thoughtful consideration for my appointment to the Jackson District Library Board. Thank you.
Now that everybody's gone, my name is Israel Gray. I'm in Summit Township. The fair, let's talk about the fair. We had one commissioner in here that really showed himself off behind the stage, put up a fight with security, and was out called for. Not very happy about that. On top of that is Mr. Overton, you know that Denise Owens, the coordinator of the fair, allows us guys, and all that, some of us guys come in there, volunteer, do security and stuff like that. I'm getting tired of getting assaulted down there and being told that we can't press charges. We've had a few guys that got choked out and stuff like that, where they're told that they can't press charges. Things need to buckle down. We are just volunteers. We don't get paid. We do it either five days a week of the fair, or we do it four days a week. It doesn't matter. We're tired of it, and we continue to want to keep doing the service that we're doing for the county at the fair. We have no issues with that, but it's time that we need to be told that we're allowed to do things like that, because I'm pretty sure if you guys were assaulted, you guys would be quick to have a police report and press charges. Okay? That just needs to be clarified, that Ms. Owens is not allowed to say, "No, do not press charges, do not do an incident report." That really does need to be clarified. The other thing is, I would like the county to consider the volunteers, because they take our telephone numbers and names, at least to allow us to at least have one free day pass to get in with our family or whatever, just for us, if we don't have a family. I've done it for the last four years now, and we have a very good turnout of staff that show up to volunteer every year. I would like you guys to take that consideration, since now it's a park instead of a fairgrounds. That does come to the board of commissioners, because the county rec tech, whatever you guys want to call it, parks, should be in charge of that now. The other thing is, the car seat deal, I'm just going to PB, go off of them guys. If you guys don't find a solution, make a millage, make a bond, like we do for everything else, like we do for the parks, for the police department, for the fire department, townships.
30 seconds, sir.
Okay. Seriously. It's not that hard. You guys can do it. We've always got rainy day fund money. Throw some of that in there.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. We have no special meetings of standing committees tonight. Entertained a motion for the minutes of the July 23, 2019 meeting. Support. We have a motion and support. Any corrections, deletions, additions? All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. We arrived at the consent agenda. Entertained a motion? We have a motion and second. Commissioner Baer. Have those come out of the committee that they reported to? So we'll be taking it to the Standing Committee Report 13B, Public Standing Committee, Public Safety and Transportation, because it is not a new item. Chair of that committee comfortable with that?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other items for removal? Seeing none, at this time, we have a motion for a corrected consent agenda. Madam Clerk, opposed to vote? Standing Committee, Public Safety and Transportation, Item 13A. Commissioner David Elwell, chairman of that committee. Commissioner Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two things tonight, appointments first. We have four boards, four appointments. The first is the Jury Board, it's a citizen-at-large appointment. It's a currently vacant seat. The applicant was Charles Falye, and he's a recommendation from committee.
Any nominations from the floor? Hearing none, all in favor? Those opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Elwell.
Emergency Management Advisory Council, it's a vacant seat. There were no applicants, and therefore no recommendations from committee. Community Corrections Advisory Board, same thing, two vacant seats for specific groups. There were no applicants, no recommendation from committee. And then lastly, the Region Two Planning Commission, it's a citizen-at-large seat, which is currently vacant. Colby Winter was the applicant, and a recommendation from committee.
Any nominations from the floor? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Mr. Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next is the 9C issue of the acceptance of the Phelps Drive Resolution into the county road. I'd like to make a comment first, if I could, and that is that this particular resolution was a topic of discussion with the administrator and the chair and I on Friday, and it came to our attention that the property or the road itself is not yet property of the Leoni DDA, and we talked specifically about delaying action on it tonight. So with that said, I have an obligation to put forth the motion to bring it out from committee, although I'll be voting no on it, or just seeking delay of it.
Mr. Vice Chairman, would you be willing to accept a motion to postpone?
I absolutely would. The applicant was Charles Falye, and he's a recommendation from committee.
Any nominations on the floor? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Elwell.
Emergency Management Advisory Council, it's a vacant seat. There were no applicants, and therefore no recommendations from committee. Community Corrections Advisory Board, same thing, two vacant seats, four specific groups. There were no applicants, no recommendation from committee. And then lastly, the Region Two Planning Commission, it's a citizen-at-large seat, which is currently vacant. Colby Winter was the applicant, and a recommendation from committee.
Any nominations on the floor? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Commissioner Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next is the 9C issue of the acceptance of the Phelps Drive Resolution into the county road. I'd like to make a comment first, if I could, and that is that this particular resolution was a topic of discussion with the Administrator and the Chair and I on Friday, and it came to our attention that the property or the road itself is not yet property of the Leoni DDA, and we talked specifically about delaying action on it tonight. So with that said, I have an obligation to put forth the motion to bring it out from committee, although I'll be voting no on it, or just seeking delay of it.
Mr. Vice Chairman, would you be willing to accept a motion to postpone?
I absolutely would.
Entertain a motion to postpone, please?
Support.
We have a motion in support. We would redirect this into the Administrator's Controller's Office to put it back on the agenda when he deems it fit for it to come with all the pertinent information and the corrections. Any questions to the postponement? Commissioner Kennedy?
Got a few questions on it. It's brought to my attention that this particular road had been brought forth to the county in the past, and that motion failed to pass. Was, am I correctly informed on that?
No, it never made it as far as even the subcommittee report.
Okay. All right.
Commissioner Bear.
I did drive out there and take a look at this site, and approaching from the southwest on Ann Arbor Road, there is a sign, 100 yards back from the intersection, announcing that Sutton Road is ahead. When you get to the intersection, there is a street sign that labels Sutton Road. There's no street sign that says Phelps Drive at all. Approaching from the northeast, again, 100 yards back from the intersection, there's a sign noting that Sutton Road is the next intersection. The sign in front of this, out near Ann Arbor Trail for Choice Laboratories, has no street address. There is no street sign that says Phelps Drive. You cannot find a street sign that says Phelps Drive out there. I spent half hour looking. I would rather than postpone this, just deny it. It's not a street. And if it is, I'd like to see when the Street Naming Committee named it.
With all those ambiguities in mind, that's why we're referring it back to the Administrator Controller's Office, to see if it should even come back to this organization.
So it's possible?
So if the Administrator-
Not possible to vote no. You can vote no on the postponement, but that would just bring it up for a full vote, and then we'd have to either vote it up or down. Whereas, as a postponement, it could be corrected.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think I would encourage the fellow commissioners to vote yes on the postponement. There's probably another number of issues with it that if we give it time and give those issues to the Administrator, it may make the arguments more appropriate for not doing it, or for doing it, for that matter. But I would suggest giving any of the issues you've got with it to the Administrator. Let him research that and decide when to bring it back through, and it'll give us time to think about it more.
Okay. Shall we vote? The clerk has it ready? The motion is to postpone the Phelps Drive Acceptance Resolution and redirect it to the Administrator Controller's Office. Yes means it is not happening tonight. The postponement has passed seven to one. Vice Chairman Elwell.
That's all I had to report, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Standing Committee, Human Services. We have no report this evening. Thank you, Dr. Tompkins. Standing Committee, General Government, Rodney Walls. You have two items that have occurred tonight. You have a Lifeways, and then the appointment also to the Library Board. You also have the appointment to the-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think there actually was an item for Human Services, which is appointments as well.
Yes, but they're empty. Oh, and Lifeways.
Right.
I apologize. Dr. Tompkins, I apologize. You have a Lifeways appointment.
Sir?
Let's be a nomination from the floor, so I need a nomination, please? Or are you making that, Doctor? Okay? Any other nominations from the floor? Yes, sir. He's applying for the district library. Stephen, you're not applying for Lifeways, are you?
No, sir.
Okay, he's- What's that? Lifeways. Under Human Services. We missed it, I apologize, Tony.
Right, right.
He's applied for the library also. Mr. Drain has. Mr. Drain has applied for both positions, library and Lifeways. We're dealing with the Lifeways appointment at this time. Okay? We're looking for any other nominations from the floor. Seeing or hearing none, all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Speak to the clerk or the Administrator Controller, please. Let me get out of committee, sir? So it'll be appearing in this month's rotation. Point of clarification, so you know, Peter, that'll be occurring in September's rotation because it arrived late. Yes, sir. We've gone past government. You can do it under old business, if you would please. Yeah, no, you can. We're at Lifeways, and we're waiting for the doctor to tell me he's done. Sir?
Also, otherwise.
Thank you, sir. Now arrived at Standing Committee, General Government, Vice Chairman Rodney Walls.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We have as well a couple of appointments to bring forward to the commission today. The first ones being the Library Board. Ella Blonde has resigned. We had an applicant from Robert Drain, and have now received a second applicant, Mr. Stefan, Stefan Rusarik. The committee appointed, or committee appointed Robert Drain, so.
The committee's recommendation is for Robert Drain. Are there any nominations from the floor? Mr. Elwell.
Stephen Reiger.
Thank you. Any other nominations from the floor? Madam Clerk, could you please tally the vote?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Bear? Commissioner Walls?
Stephen Reiser.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Reisner.
Mr. Tompkins?
Reisner.
Mr. Mahoney?
Reisner.
Mr. Williams?
Reisner.
Commissioner Elwell?
Reiger.
Chairman Shotwell.
Reiser.
Ananimos.
Congratulations, who appointed eight zero. Anything else to report from-
Yes, we have, we have one applicant that's up for the Retirement Board. This term will expire in 2022. Current member is James E. Shotwell Jr., applicant, James Shotwell. Committee, committee appointments is James Shotwell.
This is a concurrence of the Chair's appointment.
Here's appointment of the Chair.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Anything else from General Government? Commissioner-
That concludes our-
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Unfinished business. Commissioner Mahoney.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a qualifying question? Is it, did I hear you right? Daniel, Region Two Planning Commission, that's what you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
And that's the one that had one vacant seat, correct? And we made an appointment to that, did we not, tonight?
Tonight. Did you appoint Mr. Winter?
Colby Winter, we did.
Yes.
Right.
So you missed your chance, you missed your chance to nominate. So if there is another opening- Administrator Overton.
Yeah, I made inquiry with Delane today to see if there was any, and he did apply, but he didn't apply in time to be on the agenda there, the deadline there.
So with, with that said, Daniel, right now-
Mr. Chair, can I clarify one more thing with Mike? So, Mike, it was not just for the agenda for this meeting, but it didn't make it through Standing Committee either, correct?
That's what I was told today.
Okay.
Uh, I can ask Delane. Sure.
Well, at this time, what I would like to do, if the pleases the Board, is we'll go back, nominate the second applicant, let Mr. Winter and Peter, Mr. Bormuth, stand, and we will hold a vote right now to who we appoint. Okay with that?
Well, if that is done without objection, I would consider that as a friendly motion to rescind the prior appointment.
Thank you.
You could also have a formal motion to rescind, and then you could reconduct the nominations and the vote. So if there's no objection, as it was presented, that can move forward. Otherwise, it should be done by a motion to rescind.
Commissioner Elwell.
I'm not necessarily objecting, but it seems like we're getting things all twisted around. I mean-
I understand, David, but we had, we had some issues with appointments today and the electronics involved.
Well, I agree, because it did change. I mean, there's stuff that was available right when I got here that wasn't earlier. But the fact is that we had somebody that made it through the committee process that we've appointed. So we're going to now rescind that to revote? I mean, I'm not going to object to it, but it just, it would seem more appropriate that that's a board that we have openings come open fairly frequently, but whatever the pleasure of the board is, is fine with me, but we're getting awful twisted, I think.
Yes, we are. Commissioner Mahoney.
Just for a point of clarification, I don't, I don't think we're getting anything twisted. I just think that it's fair practice to do things the same as we do for other seats, whereas this application wasn't submitted in time the same way. I feel like that application that was submitted should have been printed and presented the same way this application was, because the same way the committee made a recommendation for an individual, and the board just voted for someone else to take that seat, could very well happen in this case as well.
That's correct. That's why, that's why our attorney now is recommending that you make a formal motion to rescind. Correct, but we heard objection. As Chair, I'm saying we did have objection. It was verbal.
Yeah, I, I'm not going to make the motion to do it, but I'm not objecting to it if that's what this group wants to do. I, I think it's kind of backwards to do it this way after we've appointed somebody, but-
Commissioner Bear.
Whatever the pleasure is.
Commissioner Bear.
Both candidates, I believe, were treated fairly in that there was an opportunity to nominate from the floor. So if somebody's paperwork didn't get processed, that didn't prevent them from being nominated in person from, by the floor.
That's correct. I did ask. But what I'm asking is, can we go back at this time? Because after we go through this, it's not going to matter. Well, I've gone through it, and we'll have someone appointed to Region Two, and I appreciate, Dave, what you're, where you're at, and I'll let you speak.
I'll accept a friendly amendment. And that's what our attorney recommended, correct?
No, we've now got an objection. So I just want this to be clear in the minutes for all of us.
Correct.
And my recommendation at this point would be a motion to rescind the appointment, so that you can do the second nomination.
Where I was.
Let's first have a motion to rescind, if that's the pleasure of the board. Make sure that gets support, and then have a vote.
So moved.
We have a motion in support.
Now, this vote will be to rescind it, correct?
To rescind, correct.
We like it when you wing it.
Yes.
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 Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
As Chairman of the committee that made the appointment, I would again nominate Colby Winter for that seat.
We have a nomination in a second. Any other nominations from the floor?
Second.
We have a nomination in a second. Any other nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Is it possible for me to see Mr. Bormuth's qualifications before I take a vote?
I, we do not believe so.
Mr. Chair, if I'm in order?
Yes, sir.
Is there any way that we can now rescind the motion that we're getting ready to vote on, and then bring, call for motion to bring both applications back for-
Mr. Chair, at this time, we're within the middle of a vote. You either have to vote up or down. The man's nodding yes.
Okay.
Before Mr. Kennedy votes, Mr. Bormuth, would you like to step up to the microphone and explain your qualifications?
My name's Peter Bormuth. I was the person behind the three-year process which ultimately closed the Jackson County Resource Recovery Facility. Afterwards, I was not appointed to the Solid Waste Planning Commission, but I attended every meeting. I had a positive impact on the direction of that, that committee. I most recently wrote a toxic chemical ordinance for the city of Jackson, so that we can have a full inventory of all the chemicals that are used in industrial and manufacturing processes within the city, because they potentially, like at Michener Plating, contribute to- contribute to pollution and prob- health problems within our community. You all know that I've taken many lawsuits on behalf of both the environment and on behalf of separation of church and state through our court system. I have a great interest in planning for our community, and I think there's a lot of things that I could bring to that committee. Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy.
So to be clear, my vote is a yes or no for Mr. Winters, is that correct?
No, you either vote for Bormuth or Winters.
Gotcha, all right.
Uh-huh.
Winters.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Mr. Tompkins?
Winter.
Mr. Mahoney? Mr. Williams?
Mr. Bormuth.
Mr. Elwell?
Winters.
Mr. Bear?
Winter.
Mr. Walls?
Winter.
Chairman Shotwell?
Winter.
Six Winter, two Bormuth.
Six Winter, two Bormuth. Glad you made the meeting. Any other unfinished business? Hearing none? Your new business, audit presentation? Administrator Controller? Nate gonna join us?
Yes. All right. Um, my name is Nate Baldorman. I am the principal on the audit, engagement principal on the audit for this year and have been for the last several years. Tonight, I'm just gonna take the opportunity to, um, kind of talk about the results of the audit. But feel free, if you have any questions during my presentation, please don't hesitate to, to interrupt me. The, the audit itself, um, this year, uh, was wrapped up at the end of June. I wanna commend Cecilia and, and her team. The transition oftentimes can be very difficult in the year that we have a transition from one finance director to another. I think, you know, Jim came back and helped as well, but, um, the, the audit went very smoothly, um, this year, and I've had many other experiences where transitions like this have been difficult. So, um, I wanna thank, uh, the county, um, and specifically Cecilia for, for that this year. The, uh, the results of our audit, we issued, um, a few different reports. We issued, uh, the big one, the, the county's comprehensive annual financial report. That was the primary document that we're issuing. We also issued a separate report for the employees' retirement system. And then also, uh, the Single Audit Act compliance report. In addition, we have a separate engagement, um, for, uh, what, for the medical care facility that we do separately. We actually presented that one, uh, yesterday, um, as well. So that's done under a different engagement where we engage directly with the medical care facility, but they are included in, um, in your report. And the financial statements themselves, um, you know, your report is a comprehen- is a CAFER. It includes a lot of additional information that not everybody, uh, takes the effort to go behind, or to, to, to make, to, to be able to give the additional information that's in those reports. That, uh, this report then goes to the Government Finance Officers Association, and you're, you've been awarded, um, you were awarded this past year, and we expect this report will also win, uh, the award, um, going forward, for that, uh, excellence in financial reporting. This year, um, as we, as we look at the financial statements, um, the financial results, our report, when we're looking at these reports, one of the things we always emphasize is the fact that these financial statements are ultimately, while we help prepare them, they're ultimately, uh, the responsibility of management. Management is responsible for putting the internal controls in place in order to make sure that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects and there's no misstatements, whether due to, to fraud or error. Our responsibility then is to, uh, plan our procedures so that we can issue a report on the financial statements. And the, and the report that was issued was unmodified. Will also, um, which is considered to be a clean opinion. It, it's what you're looking for when you're looking at the financial statements. This year, uh, the biggest change in your report, um, and we've talked about it in past years, was the fact that the new standards, uh, for other post-employment benefits was, was implemented. That's ret- basically retiree healthcare. And a few years ago, you had the pension standards that were implemented. Of course, with issuing the bonds last year, those numbers, um, you know, that liability, um, that was presented as a net pension liability was reduced. You actually have a net pension asset now. But now, the new standards required that you, um, implement. If you had the ca- if you have the CAFER, where it affects things is in the government-wide financial statements. The medical care facility also had to implement this new standard. As a result, um, on the government-wide financial statements only, it showed a new, a liability that hadn't been there in the past of almost $140 million. That's the unfunded liability, um, for, for other post-employment benefits. And it's a total, it's called a total OPEB liability because you don't have anything set aside in a, in a trust for those. So, um, really, when you're looking at the statements and you're looking at the numbers, that's really the biggest, the biggest change. It doesn't have, uh, a direct impact on your general fund and on your budgeting, but it obviously has, has a big impact on it, um, when you look at things on a long-term basis and when you're looking at having to fund that over time. Currently, it's pay-as-you-go, but, um, there, there's also, uh, laws with the state of Michigan that's looking at this more closely and that you're having ramifications because of that, of the reporting back to the state of Michigan because of the unfunded position of that, as well as, um, the new requirements related to anybody that's new, that's, comes into the plan, having to be funded, those types of things are, are all...
Mr. Chair.
Gramifications of it.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question? So, the, the OPEB that you're talking about, are there any requirements right now in law that mandate that we have a plan to eliminate that? Or to begin funding that, or is that not yet law?
The, the law is in place. You have a requirement, there's a separate form that now has to be, uh, submitted to the state, um, under, under those laws that were adopted a couple of years ago. It also kicked in this year where, um, the only... You have to have a plan and submit a plan if you're less than 40% funded, um, on these plans for OPEB. So you have to submit that plan. And on top of it, the only specific funding requirement that you have is that would, that there be a calculation for, uh, new entrance into the plan, I think effective July... My date's fuzzy. It's July 1st, or it, it's, it's been recent that anybody new to the plan that's been entered into the plan at that point, you have to calculate, uh, a funding, what the funding requirement would be for that person, and start setting that aside in trust.
So if I can ask, Mike, is there a plan that we have then?
Yeah, I was gonna say a couple of things. One, our plan's closed, there will be no new ones, so that, the provision doesn't apply. And the other element of it is, we meet the qualifications, and we've submitted our plan, and that is to, to pay it. We have the financial capacity to can pay that as we go. And right now, we qualify to do that, so we continue to do that. We do meet the requirements of the law.
In terms of the rest of the report, I'm not gonna bore you going through it page by page unless there's any specific items that you wanted to look at, um, in the actual, in the CAFER. If there is a di- desire for that, I can do that. But otherwise, I can jump to, um, really the results of our audit in terms of any, the findings, those types of things. All right. That, those are found in the Single Audit Act compliance report. As a part of our audit, we're also required, because you spend more than $750,000 in federal dollars, to do what's called a single audit. We go through, um, and in that report, we report based on fina- uh, financial statement findings as well as, uh, any federal award findings. Take the easy one first. On the federal award side, we looked at the WIC program and the Title IV D program, Child Support Enforcement. Part of a risk assessment process that we go through in looking at the different programs and selecting programs. We had no findings on those two programs. There were no issues in the, no non-compliance or internal control issues. We did have one, uh, significant deficiency that continued, um, from the prior year. You had two other, uh, issues last year that were, um, both resolved related to material audit adjustments. We didn't have a repeat of that this year. As well as, there was, uh, one other finding, um, that was also resolved. The, the finding related to the cash dis- disbursements? I'm sorry.
Well, I was gonna go to that.
Okay. Yeah.
I've got little blue marks.
Yep.
Uh, first, Mike, is it possible to get this part up on the screen for the public or not? I, I think we have it in our board docs. It's the 16-page one, but, uh, it's not a huge deal, but I think they should be able to see it. So I, I did read through... It, right, I was gonna say that too. It's all, the whole thing, the 116-page one as well is on our website, correct? So I did read through this 16-page one fairly closely, and I did note those deficiencies. And as you said, one was a repeat from last year, was it not, from the Sheriff's Department?
Correct. The one that made it to the level of being called a significant deficiency, yes.
And I, I think I took issue with it last year when we had it, and, uh, to be blunt, it wasn't fixed. I don't blame Cecilia, Cecilia for that. This is new to her since last year. I did take the time to talk with Mike and the chair about it, and then a follow-up with Cecilia that I was present for, and I'm confident that she's gonna fix it next time. But, uh, I'm aware of how that process works there. I don't like how that process is, and I had made some suggestions to Mike that I think we should give consideration to, uh, without getting in there and trying to run the place. But when it's two years in a row, uh, it's bothersome to me, especially if you look at some of the things that were purchased there. So again, I just wanted to say that it is bothersome to me. I'm confident that Cecilia will fix it. And hopefully, we won't see a repeat of that for next year.
I think it's already been corrected. You've discussed it with the sheriff, and it's been corrected. Yeah. Thank, thank you.
Mike, can I say one more thing? Is it fair to say that it's still a process there where checks can be written with one signature or only signature of the Sheriff's Department staff, and nobody from finance or from your office has to sign checks? Is that a fair assessment yet?
That's correct. They have a commissary account, checking account that they can do. And the finding was, the, there wasn't documentation supporting the approval process internally in the Sheriff's Department. We've since corrected that. But yet, at the same time, I recognize what you're saying, and that is, uh, something that, uh, we're moving forward. We'd like to, uh, to, um, put a little more separation between that process approval.
I would very much like to see that where there has to be a signature from here. And, uh, lack of, I think, lack of invoices for some of the expenditures was one issue, but I think if we had somebody from here, from finance scrutinizing those, uh, they'd maybe see some of the same issues I do. So I'm hopeful that we can move to something like that. Granted, uh, Cecilia may haven't convinced to put invoices with things, but I just think that it would be better if we had to have a signature from this tower building. Thank you.
That wasn't the only, I had noted those comments. And I take it from your statement, the, the two-year problem has been addressed and is fixed?
Yeah, I think that was the only one that wasn't corrected, correct?
Correct. There were two management letter comments, but they're... When we're looking at things, when we're looking at comments, those are lesser. They don't raise to the same level. That's why it's not in that report. So it's, it's, there are more things that we see that are lesser issues that we feel like still can be improvements, but...
Well, and one of the challenges that we find across the county is size. You know, as you, you know, you probably would elaborate or count that rate. When, when you don't have enough bodies to check and balance, it becomes a problem. Go ahead.
There were other issues that were, that I noted, where there were some things that needed to be done. The road fund, Department of Transportation, old outstanding checks. We still have outstanding checks from 2008, and there's a recommendation that these be addressed. Where is that being followed up?
My understanding, I, we were actually talking, I was talking with Cecilia with that on tonight, is I think we're trying to get some clarification. She thinks there may be some, um, some issues with the software that don't, that aren't allowing things to be cleared. And we just need to make sure that if, if that's the case, and they've been making sure that, you know, you have a requirement that if they're over a certain age, and you have to try to give the money to people, and if you can't find them, you have to sheet it to the state so that theoretically, they have a process to go and, and get the money if they were ever to go looking for it. So that, that process, we need to clarify, and we can work to make sure that, that that's done in the future.
That's correct. It's a software glitch.
Okay, and the other repeat, uh, comment is about the, uh, county cooled, county pooled cash. Unable to determine what specific outstanding, non-sufficient fund fees, what they are.
Correct.
What is this? People were, people wrote a check to make a payment? It wasn't money within the bank account to cash the check?
Correct, and it's, and it's on the, on the bank reconciliation. It's in sunrise form, so you can't really tell what those specific, who those specifically are related to, so they can be followed up on. And I think there may be an issue with not just what they're giving to us, but internally, what they're able to be able to do. So it's making sure that they come up with a process so that they can follow up on issues. They don't just become a reconciling item that carries on forever. It's something that's, that's recorded properly or tracked properly so they can follow up.
Well, this was a repeat item. So I guess I'd like to know, what are we doing now, so it's not a repeat item, a third year?
What we'll continue to do is discuss it with the treasurer's office.
Okay.
All right. So we've, we've kind of covered most of, of what we had. I, I will just point out, looking forward in terms of what's coming up, we do have an attachment, um, to the separate letter that, that outlines all the different accounting standards that are, that are coming up and are gonna have to be, uh, implemented. Nothing to the extent of $140 million liability going in your books, um, in the near future. But there is a significant one that we'll be working, um, that, that management will have to be working on in the, in the coming year for implementation related to fiduciary activities and some changes and how your trust and agency funds, primarily your agency funds, are accounted for, reported, and that there's, uh, um, some work that's been done by the MGF O A to help counties to make sure they're implementing that properly. But that's something that, going into the end of this fiscal year, that'll have to be implemented. So, um, there's not, you know, it's a change, uh, in accounting more so than a change in operations, those types of thing. So other than that, there's not a lot on the near horizon that, that's nearly as big as what Gatsby 75 was.
Well, on a, on the positive side, uh, looking at your two reports, one had in, uh, opinion of each major federal program. It's your opinion that the county complied with all material respects with all of the federal programs. So that was reviewed, and the county was on top of everything there. And your other report, uh, government-wide financial statements, uh, federal financial statement, the county did well on that. The, okay, good on you, the county-wide financial analysis. The, you say here that the county did well on that one. There's a group of, uh, assessments. Come on, marker. Don't want to open up the right page here. Oh, it's in the other book. There was a group of, uh, accounting estimates that people have to do. Not everything is known actually. So the county management did some, uh, capital assessments, estimates. They did some accrued compensation absence estimates. compensation absence estimates, collectible receivable balances, had to do some estimates, insurance claims, actuary values. Your statement was that they determined they were, that all these estimates were reasonable in relationship, so the county did a good job on that. Significant difficulties incurred during the audit under that category, there were no significant difficulties. So thank you county officials for that. Uncorrected and corrected mistakes, none of the mistakes were of any material value at all. No disagreements.
Tony.
So these are things I would like to compliment our executive on, our county department. Those are the, I get more value out of those statements than out of reading all the numbers. I get lost in too many of the numbers. But those tell me, those evaluation statements tell me that they did well. Thank you.
Any other commissioner questions? Is there anything you need in motions? Do we need to receive? Entertain a motion to receive the audit report.
So moved.
We have a motion and support. Any questions or comments to the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, duly carried.
Thank you.
Any other new business to come before the board? Seeing or hearing none. Public comment. Public comment guidelines, each individual will state their name, and you have two minutes at this time to address the board. You may only address the board, the board once under this public comment opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate nor answer questions at this time. Any public comment? Any public comment? Public comment is now closed. Commissioner comments? Mr. Alwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to comment briefly about the issue with the budget and about the car seat program at the Health Department. I think it's noteworthy to mention for the people here, as well as the public that may have been listening and may be listening now, that we, we don't go in as individual commissioners nor as an active board and tell individual departments where to cut. We give the administrator guidance. We hire great department heads and have great elected officials and have a great administrator. And my understanding of how it works is that he goes to them and looks to their wisdom on where they think they can sufficiently cut to meet the goal of us having a balanced budget. And it's not a matter of Mike Overton or the Board of Commissioners going in and saying, "Cut this, cut that." Mike knows what the goal is with a balanced budget. He talks with them, and they essentially decide where the cuts are. Mike, is that an accurate statement?
Yeah, that's correct. Department heads know their department better than we would ever know it. They live at, work at every day, know the needs of community, and we ask them to make the cuts that they believe will be, have the least negative impact on the community.
And then lastly, I'd like to say that we have talked about that specific program and how years ago it was privately funded, and we're hopeful that we can get back to where it is again, maybe even hosted by HFA, where obviously most of the infants come from. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Mahoney?
Just wanna say, thank you for the, the useful information from the Health Department on the car seat program and the other programs that they're concerned about. I definitely recognize the importance of the, the car seat. I've had several people reach out to me personally with concern about what's gonna happen with that program. And looking at the numbers just from last year, 274 car seats that were, were given to citizens in the community, 211 inspections, 366 education, individuals who attended education sessions, and, and just knowing that children up to age eight or the height of 4'9" have to be in a car seat, and knowing that the next closest available program, if this one is eliminated, is Onsted, Jonesville, or Ann Arbor, is a high concern for me because a lot of my constituents are the individuals who are using the car seat program. So I do hope that we can further look into, I know Commissioner Baer mentioned at our last meeting where we discussed this, that if, if we could look into what possible partnerships we could recreate or possibly continuing the program and continuing to pay for the program until we can find a partner to take over the program, seeing as how it was private and then we stepped in, took it over, and now we're gonna eliminate it. I think that we should do some due diligence and find out what we can do. And I don't know if that was a, a question that was asked directly to the administrator to look into. Can, can, Mr. Chair, could you clarify that for me?
I cannot. I don't have a direct answer for you.
Okay. Well, I would, I would...
You're, you're, this is a debatable item. If you wanna have debate on it, we can do that on whether the Health Department caused the private sector to leave the business, or if the private sector left the business because of the reduction, the reduction in cost the government was doing on the car seats and got out of it. There's a lot of things that go into this. There were private and public agencies that were involved. There was, I was involved with, at the time, Jackson J.C.'s, and the, at the time, we were separate organizations, male and female.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, maybe you...
We can go into this whole thing, Daniel, if you want to.
No, I think you...
Don't try to make, don't try to make it sound like the Health Department shut down...
No, I'm not trying to make it sound like anything, and I think maybe you misunderstood what my question is. My question is, at the last meeting Tony mentioned, can we look into what possible partnerships there are?
I did not participate in that meeting.
Oh, okay, I forgot you weren't there. That's why my, I was asking a question for clarification. So I, I would, if, if it's appropriate at this time, make a request for the administrator to look into what possible partnerships. I don't know if that has to come directly from you, Mr. Chair, or if that's something that has to be voted on by the board. I'm not really concerned as to why we got to this place, but what we can do from this time moving forward to help save this program if it's possible for us to look into what we can do.
I will tell you this, that since I became aware of this shutting down, I've been involved in three conversations with other agencies, Center for Family Health, the hospital, and the possibility, again, of a, a local organization, say the Rotary Club, or Kiwanis, or someone else who works very hard for at-risk children, to take over this project. I haven't waited around for, for an opportunity to do it. It's something that we do as an outreach and get started on it. You don't, you don't wait. You get out there and you start talking to the, to the public about it. Maybe there's someone out there in the private sector who would be happy to, to sell these at, at a discounted rate, you know, and put themselves into business and become this person for the community. You know, that type of stuff also. There's many, many opportunities that can be put together for something like this, is my answer. But we don't wait. We get out and start talking to people. So that's what I've done. I've worked, I've reached, I've reached out to two different agencies that are, at this time, doing at the hospital and Center for Family Health that are concerned about these kids, and again, like I said, a private foundation.
Thank you for that update, Mr. Chair. Just another couple of comments. Just a, a highlight, I guess. I was scrolling on Facebook and noticed someone posted a picture of the remodel of the Dollar General over on, over on MLK Drive in Prospect, and they now have fresh fruits and vegetables, which, so I don't know whose ears that comment fell on about Dollar General being an answer to a food desert, but I appreciate whoever made that happen. So I just wanted to at least make sure I said that here, present in the meeting. The other question that I had was in regards to, would be for the administrator on our request for him to look into the policy on bringing things before the board as commissioners. And I just was curious if, if the administrator had an update on where we were with his findings.
Sadly, I'm still in process on that, Daniel. Working on changing the policy. In fact, what we're proposing is bringing options for the board to decide on how they wanna see the policy, so we're working through the different options. I have discussed it with both the management team and the leadership team in the county, which is made up of all the county department heads, like officials. So I would hope to have something next month, to be honest with you.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Williams?
Just very briefly, Mr. Chair. First, I just wanted to comment on, if this, if memory serves me right, this is the first time that we've had issues with individuals bringing applications to us and us not getting them in time to be able to, to justifiably vote on, on, on said persons. So I'm asking us to make sure that we do our due diligence before we come to the board meeting so that we can make sure that everyone has the opportunity to have their application in front of a commissioner, so each commissioner can then vote for the best person that they feel for that position. Because at the end of the day, right is right and wrong is wrong, and we've been here, we've been voted in by our constituents to make sure that, that their requests make it to the public desk, and so we wanna be able to make sure that we're doing that. Secondly, I also want to comment on the growing problem that we have at the lagoons here at the Cascades Park. We all know the issues there. It's been on the, it's, it's been in discussion for some time now, and so I want us just to make us clear that this is a growing problem. And so for many of us, when it rains, we're excited about the rain because our grass gets watered, the flowers get watered, and various things that the water, that the rain helps us with, we're appreciative of that. But the individuals that are in my district, particularly those in the 6th Ward of the 8th District of Jackson, when it rains, they cringe because now they're thinking about the problems that they're gonna have in the basements and then their lawns and in various areas, and so I'm not saying that we need to go through, and as I've shared with the county administrator, I'm not saying we go through and we just spend all these millions upon millions of dollars and do things, but I am asking that we come together and find the appropriate conversations and bring the right people to the table so that we can continue to fix the problem. I've spoken with individuals at the city, I've spoken with individuals here, I've asked for meetings to happen, those have, still have not happened yet, and so I'm just calling for us to make sure that, again, we're serving the community to the best of our abilities. Thank you. Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Darius, so you understand, the Parks Board asked the Drain Commissioner to do an analysis and study of the water flow. That takes time. It involves the EPA. Because it involves water flowing, it involves the Army Corps of Engineers now in, in Jackson County, and it also involves DEQ, which is change names and has a new designation. So we're talking about four government agencies that have to be coordinated outside of, outside of Jackson County to begin working on this project. The, the wheel, this is an example of the wheel is rolling, but it's the government wheel, and it's gonna involve state, federal, people, two or three different agencies that have a tendency to come up with different solutions to problems. I will say that if you were to do the temporary cut that's been suggested, you might have some sinkholes and houses going into the ground and that type of stuff, as we're, as we're aware of what happens when you run just a 20,000-pound machine across the parks at the fairgrounds. We learned today, Daniel and I, that there's some sinkholes and peat problems in there. Think about the peat problems that we could have down there if we all of a sudden took all the water out of that soil. So we have to, we have to work within the confines. I realize the problem didn't occur overnight. It's gonna take us some time to get to where we need to get to, and I really appreciate that. Matter of fact, at the BPW meeting, the Drain Commissioner and I talked at length about some of the different solutions that are available to it, but again, it involves getting the okay and the stamp of approval and people down here to walk through the area to, to figure it out. And you and I both know, we walked down to the Cascades and the soil's wet, so let's, you know, let's, let's drain it into the drain over here, type thing, but we've gotta make sure we do it correctly, because I'd, I'd really hate to watch cars disappear into sinkholes at the Cascades, or, and I know we snicker about it a little bit, but yeah, it involves, it involves quite a thing, and, and the people that need to be are working hard on it right now. So I guess we could ask the Drain Commissioner's office to give us a report where he's at. Okay. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just got a couple things happening in my district. First is just a public announcement with what's going on in Leoni Township. There's gonna be a public hearing. It's a pretty important one in regards to whether they're going to opt out of the sale of recreational marijuana. The last hearing will be Wednesday, September 4th, at 6:30 PM. That is the last time for anyone to make any public comment in regards to that before a decision's gonna be made. So if anyone's interested in that, it's not, it doesn't just apply to Leoni Township residents. Anyone could go, whether you're for it or against it. The second issue is, I did send an email out. Mr. Gray, who lives in Precinct 7 of Summit Township, is having issues over in the Mobile Home Park off of McDivitt and Vandercook Lake. We, I sent that to Mr. Snyder, our Drain Commissioner, a while back. He did give an initial email that he was gonna look into it, but they are having some pretty bad issues of sewage backup in some of the places, and it sounds like the actual pipelines inside the Mobile Home Park itself are not sufficient, and I wanna make sure that that's being followed up on so that those residents' concerns are being addressed. He sent an email out to Mr. Snyder approximately two and a half weeks ago, didn't get a response, so I re-forwarded that. I just wanna make sure we get some action going.
Fair.
Well, back on the child seat issue, Chairman, I'd like to personally thank you for the quick action that you have taken in trying to get some, a new program started so seats are available. I have a question about the people that may be using public transportation, Jackson Transportation Authority, I know we have no relationship with them. Does anybody know whether they have child seats, child safety seats? Do their drivers, are they trained to properly take a child seat that I may bring my child in there and fasten it down properly? Do we, does anybody know any of that?
We need an answer for. Next item, 20. In accordance with NCL 15.268 legal cases, number 2, colon, 18 CV 12943 BAF dash RSW and 15 dash 002798 dash CK will be discussed. Entertain a motion? Have a motion and support. Dr. Topkins made the motion, and the second was by Commissioner Williams.
Okay. Let's not end here.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the attorney's recommendation on legal case number 218-CV-12943-BAF-RSW as so noted on the agenda for the closed session.